Amendments to. As that pops up on the screen. However, there is a topographical error needed need correcting. The asterisk in the authorization for closed session. Item 10.1 should read C. Do any members of council wish to make other amendments to the agenda? Okay, seeing none. Can I have a mover and second or to motion the approved? To prove the amended agenda as discussed. Counselor Park, Counselor McDonald. All in favor? All hands rising. So motion is carried. Are there any declarations of interest to declare? Seeing none. Okay, next on the agenda is the township proclamation for Pride Month. I'm going to read up the declaration. Whereas Red Rock celebrates the diversity that strengthens our township, including individuals who identify as two-spirit, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, intersex, queer, and all other sexual orientations and gender identities. And whereas the intent of Rainbow Collective of Thunder Bay is to encourage all Thunder Bay District municipalities to be inclusive and welcoming. Places for people of all sexual orientations and gender identities to attend school, to work, to raise a family, to start a business, to live. And whereas Rainbow Collective of Thunder Bay promises to provide hope and support for the youth and other community members. And all district, district municipalities who experience bullying and harassment based on their sexual orientation or gender identity. And whereas the COVID respectful events and activities celebrated through a pride 2021 will provide family entertainment, community, education, and improvement to all overall quality of life in the Thunder Bay District municipalities. Now therefore, I Dark East Robinson, Mayor of the Township of Red Rock, do hereby proclaim June 2021 as Pride Month in the Township of Red Rock. As you know, we will be doing a flag raising tomorrow, social distancing at 3pm along with the municipality of Nipigon. Okay, now we'll move on to consider the minutes of prior council meeting. The open session minutes for the regular meeting, May 17th are in items 3.1 of the agenda and the closed session minutes. For the meeting are an item 10.2. The minutes of the special meeting of June 1st are in items 3.2. Are there any errors or omissions to note in the open session minutes? Counselor McDonald.
Yes, in the May 17th. Regular council meeting minutes. Item 6.6. It says be it resolved that Counselor Park and Muir be appointed to the environmental committee in the council liaison positions. It's it should say counselors McDonald and Muir.
We probably all have the same question right there. I was asked that same question.
Good, Counselor Muir.
I believe that the other one was down on 6.8. The resolutions. That I was the representative of the finance committee was that? Did we go through that? And then there was the Marina Advisory Committee, I believe, was a finance. I was, but not the Marina Advisory. I believe Counselor Tedesco was the Marina. No, I'm not sure who was appointed that.
Never was.
Okay, anything else?
Yes, please. The administration was directed to send information to Limestone Partners. Has there been any further comment with regards to that? Did Limestone have any comments regarding the the information that Glenn Hart had provided us?
So this is just to approve the minutes. It's not, I don't think we further discussed what was going on or?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, are there any errors or omissions to note in the closed session minutes? On Miss Evans.
I just checked my notes from the council meeting. If Council Muir is not on the Marina Committee, then we need someone else to be appointed to that committee. So in my notes, I had that we were looking at who was taking over what roles because of people who had resigned and and otherwise. And I have Mayor Robinson as saying she wanted to maintain the public works position and the library board. But she would offer up Marina and finance. And I have Counselor Muirs as saying that he could take on a couple and Marina Advisory because it ties into tourism and and finance. Because he was, he liked finance. That's what my notes say. So I may be mistaken, but if Council Muir isn't going to be on the Marina Advisory Committee, we should appoint someone else. And that can be as under new business later in the agenda. And that's fine, but we just make sure there's no vacancy on that committee.
Gord, if you want, I'll step in and fill that vacancy.
Yeah, I'm thinking I could do it. I just, I don't recall that, but you know what? I might have said that. So yeah, I could stick that up. That's commitment I made. No, I do. I do remember saying the. The finance for sure. But yeah, I could stick with it if that need be for sure.
Okay. So are there any errors or omissions to note in the closed session minutes? Seeing none. Okay. We have a mover and second or for motion to approve the open session minutes from item 3.1 as amended. Counselor Tedesco, Counselor Muir. All in favor? All hands rising. So motion is carried. May I have a mover and second or to approve the closed session minutes and items 10.2? Counselor Park, Counselor McDonald. All in favor? All hands rising. So motion is carried. Ms. Evans, do you have a question? Your hands up on your screen. Well, maybe that's my laptop. Oh, that's mine. Sorry. I don't know why it's there. Okay, no items of correspondence for put forward for consideration at this meeting? Okay, the next matter, item 5.1 of the minutes from the DSA board for its meeting in April. Do any members of council have questions for the CAO clerk? We follow had the report. No questions. Is there a mover and second or for a motion to receive the minutes? Counselor Park, Counselor McDonald. Okay, all in favor? All hands rising. Motion is carried. Items 5.2 are the minutes from the environmental committee for its meeting, May 25th. Do any members of council have questions for the CAO clerk or for counselors McDonald or Muir? Counselor Muir.
Just have a comment in speaking with the environmental committee, the the report that was submitted. We'd like that to be made public for people to view if possible, the one that was sent in as well as the minutes. Is there a spot that we get post that for people to review where all the documentation came from? There's quite a few hours put into that. So we're hoping that could be viewable.
Any comments for the clerk besides the? Posting of your, I guess your. Additional minutes.
We have made, I have made note on that. So.
Okay.
I don't think that will be a problem.
Okay, is there a mover and second or for a motion to receive the report? Counselor Tedesco, Counselor Park. All in favor? Motion is carried. Counselor McDonald.
Sorry, I just have a quick question. So with these recommendations, what are the next steps? Like the the CAO will pass this on to the public works and then they will investigate it further for us. Okay, I was just wondering.
Yep. Okay, the first report in 6.1 is administrative report on activities. Any members of council have questions for administrative staff? Did you have your hand up, Nadia? Nadia, no. No questions? Okay, is there a mover and second or for a motion to receive the report? Counselor Park, Counselor Tedesco. All in favor? All hands rising. So motion is carried. Okay, the next report 6.2 relating to the annual bursary award. Do members of council have questions for Ms. Evans? So we're all given the names of a bit of a report on the back. You don't, doesn't say who they are with in regards to Mark's career goals, volunteerism, extracurricular activities, achievements, and awards. Counselor Tedesco.
I have to say, it must have been a very difficult job for Rosalie. These young people are impressive. You must have had a heck of a time. So thank you very much for what you've done.
So does anyone have a recommendation on? We'd like to, okay, Counselor Park.
So I think they're all worthwhile, and I think it's really hard to choose. Would we consider doing a lottery? That's my recommendation.
Counselor Muir.
Yeah, I'd be honestly down for a lottery as well, too. This is always a tough decision every year. There's six, there's $500. To me, I I always think if somebody's enrolled and been accepted, it kind of gives them the edge. I don't, I didn't really see that on here. But I think the students that have been enrolled and accepted into the course, to me, get the edge on this. And but yeah, if we, this is, this is the tough decision, this one. Let's let. Straw straws.
I agree. I agree. Yeah, maybe like you know how they have that online wheel where you could put the six names in or or six numbers, one to six? Let it spin and then it's just a random. Good idea.
Rosalie, do you have a wheel?
I'm just, I just think if we do that, then that's just setting precedent. So then that's how we'll do it from now on. Or that's all.
I like that idea. We're gonna do it from now on. This is the, this is the toughest one, in my opinion, to make this decision. This is.
Mark.
Just as a bit of information, and certainly that's a decision of council, but I have seen in the past where a lot of municipalities have kind of went to two different bursaries as well. So it does maybe make the decision for council slightly easier where you can take that stream. Say a student who is going to the university stream versus a student who might be going to the college or the trades road. So that might make a decision a little bit easier sometimes with council as well. And it gives you that pick of. It gives you a pick of a couple. But again, I mean, yeah, it's it's certainly a decision of council. If that's how you want to direct us to do that, we could certainly. Make a decision based on on a lottery type of system as well. But you may in the future want to look at that because it did make a big difference sometimes on. And sometimes marks or you know that 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 student who might be going, like I say, to the university stream versus the college stream. Just a little bit of something I've seen before. That's all.
Ms. Evans.
I just wanted to respond to the question. So I hate these kinds of things because I always want to give the prize to everybody because they're all worthy. So I concur with counsel that it's such a tough decision. It's hard to do. But Counselor Tedesco, I don't know about the online Wheel of Fortune, but I'm sure we can find out. And in terms of more than one bursary, that's up to council, of course, because it would need to be funded. As of Counselor Muir's comments typically, and well, maybe not typically, it's been a long time since I applied to university, but. I don't know that we know at this point in time if people have been accepted. Sometimes they're on a waitlist and then they get accepted later. So that might be hard if we waited to see who was actually accepted or not, because these kids are still in high school and just graduating. Some of them I'm sure have been accepted, but that wasn't part of the application form. So it wasn't something that I put in the. Matrix there for you to look at.
And it is a requirement that they submit. Their administration administrative letter, right, to receive the bursary.
And I don't think it's given out until like January after the first semester, right? I like the lottery, guys.
In response to Mark's comments, were you saying that the university would be weighted more than a college? Because that would not seem.
No, no, I would say I've seen it where, I mean, you might just put that 500 to 250 each. Yeah. You, you know, it does give you that that chance for every. It does give you that that diversity in your selection, but. I I think a lot of times though, too, you're right, a lot of times they are written to a child who is attending post-secondary education, right? So and I think then Counselor Parks, right? Lots of times it's paid out after that first, that first semester or that is completed. Or you have proof of registration into, but that's how I've seen it done in the past. So it's totally council decision, but that was just an option or something to think about. It just represents all all students sometimes as well.
I believe we give out half. At the beginning, and then you have to, after Christmas time, you submit to get the other half, correct? Sam? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's how it's done. Okay.
So we'll leave it up to administration to come up with a lottery and they decide or whoever gets it then.
We can do a simple, a simple lottery, like we'll, we'll put the names kind of in a, in a little drum and we'll pick one out if that's, that's what council wants us to do and we'll do it.
Okay.
That's not a problem.
I prefer a Wheel of Fortune wheel.
Yeah.
So can we do like a Facebook Live kind of a feed, make an event out of it? That would be fun. I mean, that would be super fun. Do it live on Facebook. People can log in. We can share it. It could be something annually we do.
Yeah, sure.
Well, let's see if we can figure out how to do that first. And if they weren't successful, then we'll go old school with names in a hat. How's that sound? Right? Okay.
What was, yeah, no, that's wrong. We'll, we'll, we'll figure something out. And if we can make it exciting and we will.
Okay, can I have a mover and a second or I guess to motion or? Give administration. Authority to host a raffle? Or a draw to pick the name of the bursary winner? All in favor? Or I mean. Counselor Muir and Counselor McDonald. All in favor? All hands rising. So motion is carried.
We'll try to get you, we'll try to get it exciting, Gord.
Okay, the next report, item 6.3 is a report recommending that the red, that Red Rock rescind the state of emergency declared on March 27, 2020. Relating to COVID-19 pandemic. Do members of council have any questions for Ms. Evans? She did provide a detailed report. Counselor Tedesco.
What causes a state of emergency? Like what is the precipitating factor for it to either start or to end? Is that, is that not something that's done by the province?
Oh, the province declares its own emergency for its own reasons, and they have declared that emergency and they've provided all kinds of emergency funding. And they've provided their stay-at-home orders and all those things fall out of their declaration of emergency. But it appeared to me, looking at the records, that although Red Rock declared a state of emergency, you haven't acted on it. You've done nothing. You've not reported to the province. The emergency operations committee has not met. There's no minutes. And and the reason you would want a state of emergency locally is there's a couple of reasons. One is it allows you to bypass your purchasing bylaw. If you need supplies or PPE or something, you don't have to go through a tendering process, that kind of thing. Another is that you might, might. Be able to access emergency grant funding, but the province has given grant funding to all municipalities for COVID. So that's not an issue. I personally didn't see a reason to maintain this declaration. If you want to maintain it, then I think your EOC needs to meet, it needs to deal with it and needs to have some minutes put forward to the province, et cetera. But I didn't see a reason to continue, and I thought you should declare it done and then report that to the province. Because they'll have the POC, the Provincial Emergency Operations Committee. They sent emails on a daily basis to all CEM season in Ontario, and they list all of the declarations of emergency. So you're on this list and you're not really doing anything with it. So I just thought, let's rescind it and take that off the province's plate.
Rosalie, Mark, there was a item on the news today that indicated that the municipalities would be receiving $100,000. I think this is like new, and I don't think it has, I don't know whether it has anything to do with declaring a state of emergency or being out. It is related to the, to the COVID thing.
I believe that was to do with recreation today.
Recreation?
That's so noted. We'll definitely look into that.
Counselor Muir.
I think the township was proactive. I think we were one of the first ones to call the state of emergency as it was. I think we were proactive on it. But I also think calling it off at this point be proactive as well. I mean, this is going to end at some point. So I mean, I'm in agreeance with what Ms. Evans has provided to call it off at this point.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Evans. Do I have a mover and a second or to motion rescind the state of emergency? Counselor Tedesco.
Before we get into it, there's a comment there is CEMC appointment. That was part of that. Do we have an appointment?
I would imagine that is on there for the discussion of of moving forward, Rosalie, with with the current CMAC and the transition. Is that? Am I correct there? Because I could speak to the discussions I had on that. If if that's why that that is there, which I think it is.
I do. Oh, sorry. Ms. Evans.
Sorry, my internet kicked out, so I missed the question. Something about CEMC.
The question was on CEMC appointment. So I was going to speak on on the discussions I I was having on that, that role moving forward as we discuss. With the fire chief. That's why it's on there for discussion. So just to to fill in, at this point, the township of Red Rock was non-compliant in that, in that CMHC role. The current fire chief is becoming compliant. At which point we feel it's, it's not really the best solution to have your fire chief as your CMHC at the same time. Because if you did have an emergency, I mean, his role would be to be foots on the ground, right? Feet on the ground. So but we are a little bit behind the eight ball on that one as well. So what we, what we have planned, I met with the fire chief earlier last week. He is going to continue with the with the training. So at which point he will become, he will become fully certified and we will become fully compliant. At which point I have one year to become compliant as well. So in that transition between between Chief Petrie and myself, we will make that transition. But in the meantime, it's, we're probably looking at about a six month to one year turnaround, and the fire chief is okay with that. So what what we have set up now is I will be the alternate. And then when we do both become compliant, your, your CAO clerk will become your, your main contact for CMC, CM, or CEMC. And and Ryan, as the fire chief, will be that alternate contact. So it just, it just makes a lot of sense. It's cleaner. Like I said, your fire chief, you know, if we did have an emergency, should have his feet on on the ground. So we work, we're working on that. Ryan's was testing again last week. We should have everything moving in that process very shortly and we'll be fine again. So that's our plan. That's our plan for that situation. I don't know if Rosalie wanted to add anything to that, but.
No? Okay. Is there a mover and second or for a motion to rescind the state of emergency? Counselor Muir, Counselor Tedesco. All in favor? All hands rising. So motion is carried. Okay, next report 6.4 relates to administration's recommendation to write off penalty and interest accumulated since 2014 on a piece of property due to an error by impact in recording ownership. Do members of council have questions for Ms. Evans? So the report is detailed. So it's basically the penalty and interest owing, not the the full tax areas. So that the owner of the property would be paying. We're just canceling out the. Counselor Tedesco.
Are we talking about the mill property or are we talking about some of the tax surplus properties?
This is one of Cascade's properties that was misnumbered. I don't know if Rosalie would like to. I don't know if Rosalie would like to address it some more.
Sure. So council's in the process of obtaining title to some of the properties from Cascades and/or Norampac. So between Cascades and Norampac, they had some title issues. So both of them are agreeing as vendors to sell to the municipality for nominal sum, a bunch of properties. When the lawyers, our lawyers as purchasers asked for tax certificates to make sure the properties are clean, we found out about this error. So there's a small piece of property. Well, I don't know about small, but it's, it's relatively small compared to the rest. But one of the parcels we're taking title to has tax arrears on it. So we're like, why did they have tax arrears on one parcel and not any of the other parts? Cause they never got a tax bill. So they never paid it and they never got a tax bill because MPAC registered the company name or the owner name incorrectly. So instead of Cascades or Norampac, it's registered to the numbered company one, eight, nine, yada, 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 that we're familiar with. And that company has not been paying its taxes. So it never said to us, oops, this isn't our bill. It just has been ignoring all the bills. So it never came to the attention of anyone that this property was being billed incorrectly until now. So then our lawyer brought this to our attention to see if they would agree to put the closing date off. Cause we were supposed to already have closed so that council could look at this issue. And so the closing date is now two days from now to allow council's decision to happen. Um, but we can't write off the actual principal amount because you're not allowed to, it's called bonusing. You're not allowed to give financial advantages to corporate entities. So you can't write off the actual principal. And, and if Cascades and/or Norampac had been built properly, they would have paid it. So why would we make them pay penalty and interest when they never got a bill? That's why I'm recommending write off the penalty and interest and have them pay the, the principal before closing. So that we get a clean property and then we're done. I hope that helped.
Does, does MPAC have any liability here if it is their error?
Typically, no.
Rosalie, the only reason I brought it up was I just wanted clarification that it wasn't the, uh, one eighty-nine property versus, uh, cause I knew that there was a number of other smaller, uh, Norampac donations to the municipality. So as long as it's not the one eighty-nine that we're dealing with, that would be fine by me.
Okay, is there a mover and seconder for a motion to write off these charges? Councilor Tedesco, Councilor McDonald? All in favor? All hands rising, so motion is carried. Okay, six point five relates to need for a special council meeting for consideration of the budget. Uh, do members of council have questions for Ms. Cookie? So I don't, can we discuss the budget and then, cause we don't know, it potentially could be passed tonight, right? No?
Okay. No, um, so we need to, council needs to choose one of the tax scenarios that I've proposed. And then I will need a, a, a very short amount of time, once we, once you choose one, for me to then translate that into the budget that I, um, had shown you. So I think, you know, for, for myself, I'm, it won't take no more than a few moments for me to make that update. Um, but then I do sort of like to just format the report. So the budget is clean and double checked for errors and stuff. But I'm available any day within the next two weeks, except for the sixteenth. Um, so whichever day council chooses, they want to do a special meeting. If we can get some sort of a decision today on the scenarios, we can move forward with that.
And if we were able to, that meeting would probably be in, as per our discussion today, maybe five, 10 minutes at most, right?
Yeah. So what we would do is we would, we would prepare and advance the bylaws and the tax rates and ratios. Um, so the, the budget meeting, the special meeting, provided there was nothing else on the agenda, would just be more of a formality kind of thing. So.
Okay. How does Thursday this week? Um, Ms. Evans?
Just wondering if we have an update on the audit from last year?
No.
Uh, any comments about Thursday this week? Councilor Mayor?
If, if we're doing Thursday, can we, can we push it back maybe an hour to five o'clock if possible?
Yep.
Everyone's okay with that?
I also think that, that slightly could change depending on the, on, on how the discussion goes tonight, but we can set that for Thursday. I mean, so that we are ready, right? So I think that's a good idea, um, to set that date if Thursday works. And, cause I, I mean, we could, we could always, uh, we could always make a change if, if we had to. But at least if we had a date set, we, 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 we could proceed, so.
Okay.
So Thursday, five o'clock, tentatively as a, as a date right now?
Yep. Okay, so is there a mover and seconder for a motion to schedule, schedule a special meeting of council on June?
Yeah, what is it?
So we have the date, that's June tenth. At five PM to further consider, uh, township budget twenty twenty-one. Councilor Tedesco, Councilor McDonald? All in favor? All hands rising, motion is carried. Six point six in the report, council requested from our treasurer relating to the impacts of various tax scenarios for our commercial industrial ratepayers. Do members of council have questions for Ms. Cookie?
Can we make a lottery wheel?
So great report. Thank you for that. It's, um, it's quite detailed. So that's great. So there is a recommendation, but, uh, okay, uh, Councilor Mayor.
Yeah, I was, I was reading, so I've been reading over this and, and thinking and, and stewing and, and it's, it's perfect information to me, reading this. I, I do believe that we could have a serious option seven though. I, I'm gonna put this on the table right now. I, uh, I, I look at, I look at the amount the people in Red Rock are paying in taxes. And it's absolutely insanity, the amount of money people are paying. It's understandable, but it's a lot. So to ask people to pay more does not sit well. It's been a tough year for everybody. I think asking for more is not the way to do it. Uh, my opinion is that we go with option one. Um, we did mention there was a few things with option one. So that would give us the fifty-seven thousand put into the reserve fund. But we also spoke about going to collections, working on collections, working on the subdivision. I mean, we've got a, we've got a bank that in the future here too. I mean, then other was talked about, if we didn't raise now, we'd have to raise next year, but we have to look at that subdivision as getting ready to come in. But I'm looking at this, I believe that the forty-seven thousand dollars that needs to go into that reserve fund, I believe we need to look into our efficiencies to find that money internally. And I, I want to put that on the table there tonight for council to consider.
If I can make a comment on that, um, cause I do, I did write this report with it in mind that we wanted to sort of minimize the impact. So there's, there's a couple of things. Um, there is no, that I can find municipality in the province that has a one-to-one ratio for, um, tax residential versus commercial. In fact, our sister communities, if we're looking at things like Scriber or Horn Payne, uh, that sort of things, they're at one point eight, one point ninety. I think Scriber's at one point ninety. So, um, the lowest one that I could find was Conme, which is one point one five. It doesn't make sense from official responsibility position for me, from my standpoint, to keep the one point, the one-to-one right now. In particular, when even my largest potential scenario that I addressed out only impacts one commercial taxpayer, less than fifteen hundred dollars at the, at the extreme high end. But it makes a very big difference to the municipality. So there's that to consider. Um, so the other thing is, is because we don't know the timing of subdivision and, you know, the mill property being sold, council can always do rate reductions. You can always, always tax rate reduce when higher assessments come. So if we end up with this beautiful lakefront subdivision that brings in, you know, a couple of million dollars in assessment value, do a rate decrease. And that way, at least you're not, um, putting yourself dangerously close to the line, which where, where our reserves are, we are very close to the line. Um, a couple of other things that, that have come to light is we are doing an AMO audit. And it does look like we have improperly used our gas tax funds that those will need to go back into reserve. And the last thing is, is that we wanted also, I want to also stress that at one point three million dollars. Um, I, I got a few comments after last meeting where people were like, well, forgot this money. Like, why are we adding more? Like, you know, we're, we're raising taxes, but we've got this pot of money. Um, I, as a count, if I was in the council seat, I would be terrified of having that little amount in reserve. So those are kind of just my things I kind of wanted to reinforce is that, uh, and, and, and also just so you do know as well, I spoke to Mark about this at length today. My priority number one, after getting the water treatment plant cost reconciled, is going to be collection. So that's already, that's already happening. I want to make sure that we're collecting as much as we possibly can. Um, but looking at this, I, I don't know that I've over budgeted the allowance this year. Um, and I don't know how much I'm going to be able to get done because I haven't talked to your, your ratepayers yet. I don't know what impacts of COVID have happened. I don't know what the individual situations are and I, I hope to report on that very soon. So that we, we kind of get a, a pulse of what's going on with the people who aren't paying and what's sort of happening with them, right? Um, between now and then though, I, I, I think we still have to, even without that information, we have to approve a budget. So that tax bills can go out and what have you. So that's kind of my, my response to that.
Nadia, in earlier communication with you, I had mentioned the, uh, the hope that we would, uh, settle or get a settlement from the mill tax arrears. When that settlement comes in, which is what, one point two million it's supposed to be? Will that go towards the ability to reduce taxes or put it in reserve or something of that sort?
So any funds that come into the community that aren't budgeted for, um, we, I, I do hesitate to say, we're going to use this money for this. What happens is then is of course up to council direction. So at the end of that year, whenever it is, and I can produce, pretty safely say unless Ms. Evans wants to correct me, that that isn't going to happen this year. So let's just say two years from now, we settle this mill property, we get this influx of money. Or if we happen to know during budget time that it is happening, it's then goes to council to decide what the proper uses of, of it are at that time. If council decided they wanted to put it into general operating reserve and then withdraw it for that operating year, we could definitely propose, um, a, a reduction in that, in that year. Just don't know what that looks like at that time though, right?
Ms. Evans?
So, my understanding of arrears is that it does not impact your budget. It's, it's cash flow. You've already budgeted to collect that money. Every year when you do the budget, it's based on your assessment and your tax rate. And if somebody doesn't pay, that's arrears, that's cash flow problem. That's not budget. When you collect this money, it's not a bonus. It's not something you can put in reserves. It's not something you can, you've already accounted for it. You've already counted on having that revenue. The, the extra is the penalty and interest.
In the case that, that this property does settle, because we are out of the year that we, we would have to recover our allowance. So we have budgeted year over year for the taxes that they haven't paid. So yes, we budget their taxes and then we budget them to not pay it. Because it's all going to come in and it's probably going to be accumulation of multiple years of taxes that they haven't paid. In that particular year, we are going to have, um, a reversal of the allowance. So it will, will be in that year because of the bigness of it, it will be revenue, additional revenue for the township in that year.
No, I'm thoroughly confused.
I'm sorry. So each year we budget for tax revenue, which is the taxes that are paid. But we know that some of those taxes are never going to actually arrive. So we know that we, when we send a bill to one, eight, nine, they're not going to pay it. So I also budget for them to not pay their bill. So really I budget, say, uh, uh, you know, two dollars in taxes, but one dollar of it I know is not going to be paid in, in any given year. So we do that year over year. But because we'll have maybe, I don't know, five years of taxes, we only budget one year not paid at a time. So if we all of a sudden collect five years of taxes that we thought we were never going to get, that is revenue for us in that year.
Councilor Park?
Nadia, can you, can you explain, um, the gas tax that you feel may have like been misused and what the, what the financial ramification of that could be? Cause that could be huge, right?
Um, okay. So AMO has decided to audit Red Rock. Um, and so what they do is they administer our gas tax funds and gas tax funds are used for very specific purposes. And if the gas tax funds are not used, they have to go into their own separate bank account, completely separate from any other monies that the township receives. Because let's say we want to save them up to, to do a big roads project. Okay. And that does happen from time to time for communities. Um, Sam and I found out today because we spoke to the person at, at AMO. And what he had is our report from twenty twenty that listed, this is what we used our gas tax money on. And what we used our gas tax money on was ineligible. So the audit isn't done, but I mean, when I saw the report today, I was like. So what happened is, is we've spent money on something. The previous year, C A O was like, oh, we'll just use gas tax money for this. We can't use that gas tax money. So we need to put it back into the bank account. And so part of our one point three million dollar reserve is actually gas tax, unspent gas tax funds, which we really can't touch for general operations. Um, I don't know why that happened. The language around what is and isn't allowed is fairly easy to understand.
Okay.
Um, and the number is seventy-two thousand dollars. That's under, that's under review. So that we're not losing that money. Just so we, just so you know, we, we just have to put it back until we can use it for the right thing.
Okay, now we get money, assuming from the mill property. Uh, we have outstanding tax arrears. I think we're in the order of about three hundred thousand dollars plus. Doesn't all this money eventually do something good for Red Rock?
Yes. Absolutely. But that, that what it, what that money will do will be up to council in the time that it's received. So we would put together probably a document, something like this that says, here are some options for council to consider and council would make a decision on that.
Rosalie, do you project roughly what time, what length of time would be required for the mill property taxes to be resolved? And, you know, cash in the bank for us?
So this is a matter on closed session. Um, there is a report on that. Um, there is a settlement proposal that has a timeframe attached, but we can talk about it in closed session.
So are there any other comments or does anyone like one of the tax ratios that have been proposed? So the recommendation is proposal number six. That is a one point eight-five percent increase and a commercial ratio of one point one. Councilor Burke?
So I want to say that I was sort of dragging my heels when we had our last meeting and, um, thank you, Nadia, for the time and effort that you put into this. And I do support the increase. And I think it's unfortunate, but I feel as though in order to be fiscally responsible and to be in a good financial place, I think maybe we, we don't really have a choice. And the fact that we have perhaps maybe misused some gas tax funds, I think we don't really have a choice. So I support it.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Counselor McDonald? I would go with scenario five at the 1.5%. And just because that is what the town is kind of used to anyways, and you're still getting a large sum. And then it also has the commercial tax ratio that I feel like is about time we need to start using that. Um, but I am still open to scenario six, but I think five would be a little bit better.
But just so you know, scenario five will result in a commercial tax increase average per property of 369 dollars. With the largest property having an impact of 1,441 dollars. So you'll have only, there's, there's only one commercial property that is most affected. It's a pretty popular spot. So that property is going to be. Impacted by about 1,400 dollars this year.
So are you trying to discourage that?
No, I'm just letting you know.
Okay. So that you, that's the recommended thing.
So that you know what the impact of your decision is, right? So like, sometimes I find it's helpful for council to know, like when they're deciding this, does this mean everyone's going to have to pay a thousand dollars more on their taxes? So really it does impact only an average of 370 dollars for your commercial folks.
Mm hmm. But there is more commercial than just that one place.
Yeah. So the impact is on several properties. Um, there's just one property that is assessed quite higher than the most. So that one is the most impacted. Sort of stands out because it is.
And will things change once impact starts reassessing?
That's so hard to tell, right? My ultimate goal for Red Rock is that before impact gets their. Wheels turning again after COVID that we've got a beautiful subdivision and they can have a lovely assessment increase. That's what I would love. They, if I knew what impact was going to do, I'd be a rich lady, I think, but I don't know.
I am, I am in favor of option six, which is the recommendation from the treasurer. Any more discussion? Counselor Tedesco?
I'm in favor of number two, scenario number two. It's a, an increase and gives a decent surplus. Go away.
So council mayor or council McDonald?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, uh. Okay. I mean, I, I. It's one of those things, right? Like I mentioned, we're paying a lot for taxes, a lot. Start raising, 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 right? I know, I know we do have the option. I'd be more comfortable saying, yeah, for sure. Number six, let's rock and roll. We know that we could 100% go and say in two years from now, everyone's getting a decrease. I don't see a guarantee on that, right? I don't gamble at all. When I look at it right now, I see. I see, yes, we can do that. But I also see that internally and we, we can look at efficiencies. I believe we got to look at efficiencies. And, and, and go that road as well, too. I really, I really do. We got to look at, at running the business efficiently. Making savings internally and ending on that road. That's got to be stressed on as well, too. Before we start asking for more, more money, have the ducks lined up and then, then keep rolling on that.
I think, um, if I could offer some advice on that is I, I think Ms. Evans had said last meeting that next year is an election year. There's every year that you don't want to put an increase in, it'll be next year.
I just.
And I guess that's, that's one thing I'm not worried about at this point. I mean. When there's politics and, and to me, this is, this isn't politics. This is our hometown, right? We got to kind of, we got to get it comfortable. So everybody's happy to be in this town, right? That's, that's kind of how I'm looking at it as, as long-term. What's best for Red Rock long-term? What's best for people right now? Cause I know there's people right now that aren't looking five years down the road. They're looking right now. Cause right now is their, you know, their time. So. It's one of those things, right? What, what would be best for everybody scenario? And I know a 0% increase, we get a, you know, we, we find a. Chest full of money, which government will take most of it anyway. But you know what I mean? That we, we, we got to do something. I'm hoping we can get some communication down from Bruno and, and find out. About that subdivision. And I have no doubt in my mind, once that environmental assessment's done and they start putting lots and they're going to sell, there's going to be people here, one, two, three years. Yeah.
Hope, sorry, my Bud Light goal light was just going off. We just have to remember though, that we do have a commitment to the. Right? To the development. So we have a lift station, which is right, five to 800,000 dollars. Where is that coming from? So do we just pull that from reserves? We have, you know, the roads that we're doing this year. We also have. For me.
But we won't have that in reserve. Just.
No, I know. So that's what I mean. And then we also have other announcements that we cannot say yet, but it's to do with recreation. Which is right, all infrastructure maintenance. So there's all of those things. So you have to. Of course, everybody wants a 0% increase, but that's, that's not sustainable and not right now during COVID. We all know that. So we have to come up with a number.
The other thing I would. Is that there's so much infrastructure going on right now. Um, it does seem like a bit of a balloon of it. And that's a 1.8 million dollar commitment for the, for the township to get all that, that match money, right? But I would assume and predict that in, after that's done, there will be a bit of a rest. So we're not doing all these major infrastructure projects for years into perpetuity. And then we can do, you know. A 0% because we're not committed to these, these enormous projects. But like I just. Would really worry at scenario one. I really would for like the next 12 months, it would be. It would be a lot of stress on you guys.
Yeah.
Mark, what's the average rate increase across the district? You've got experience with Scriber. You've got knowledge of other places. Uh, 1.5 is, is that not a kind of an average number?
Yeah, I think just to even go back just a bit to our discussions today, we, we clearly went through a scenario one through six today and. We had good discussions on ourselves. We had really good discussions because. I, I still have a, a background on, on what you guys sit and go through as, as on a day, on a daily basis as counselors. So. Yeah. To answer your question, I mean, very rarely, uh, do you see a 0%? Um, I, I think that would be very rare. I'm a, a comfortable in history of incremental increases that. Really aren't going to put a huge, huge burden onto your tax base. And I think that's what, what our treasurer is, is recommending. She, she is. Did a lot of work and is trying to put the community in, in, in the best place she can. She can look into because that's what a budget is. It's a, it's a crystal ball, right? You're, you're looking in there. It's a working document. So, I mean, her advice to us. Again, her professional advice is, is, is trying to put Red Rock into a place that if something happens, if there is something that happens. There's a crisis, then we're okay and we're ready for that. And we had multiple discussions today and lengthy ones on, on this. And again, it's, it's whatever council. Feels they're comfortable with. And, and, and we, we did say we could. We could work with, with, with a lot of the different scenarios. But in, in, in the professional opinion of the treasurer, uh, and, and, and. In discussions with all of us and, and she's, she has that professional background. She's trying to, to recommend what is the best. Possible financial situation for the township moving forward. Again, it's, it's whatever council is, is comfortable with. And, and we can certainly work with a lot of these different options. To answer your question, uh, Cam, um, yeah, I mean, I, I've seen budgets and I would say your average is probably in that 1.5 to 2%. I would say that's probably if you did look through, uh, through the region, you would see that. The one thing we did, I did find today, and I reached out to four different municipalities, Red Rock is very unique. In a lot of the taxation structures that it does have, especially on the commercial rate. Um. That is, um, something that you don't see. Um, it, it, it is, um. I couldn't find it. Like I said, we put, uh, I, I reached out to colleagues and contacts that I have at Florida municipalities today. And it was, I mean, anything from 1.8 to 1.98, 1.9. And, and I'm certainly not saying to go there right away. That's, that's, I mean, that's not. And, and we, we had a lengthy discussion on that today, but. Small changes will get us where we have to be. So again, it's. That's usually the average. I, I'll be, I'll be honest with you. Um, it, it's usually in that range. I always found it to be a comfortable range. That's. And if it's spread out through the, through the municipality, then. It's usually something that's accepted. You, you always have to remember the best way I always had it explained to me is. As we need, if it's 1.4 million dollars that we collect in taxation, if, if we need 1.4 million. And we take from one segment of the population, we talk about, uh. You know, on the road in and, and how many more people pay and, and how the higher radius out there versus other, other, or commercial versus residential. It doesn't, it never changes our number. We still need 1.4 million. So as you squeeze that balloon, if you're taking more from this side. You, you're, you're taking less from the other. So. That's why I always think that, that, that 1.5, that 1.5 into two is, is, is usually a, a good guide. And that's, I think where you'll find most, most municipalities fall in this process.
And so just some of the other stats in the area, um, I know that Nipigon and Scriber and Terrace Bay are both putting in increases under 2%. Greenstone just approved to 2.75%. And then there's. 1.5 in Conme and I think the same Oliver Pupunj are the ones I sort of know off the top of my head. So with the 1.5, the 1.85. You're not skyrocketing out of, out of what's happening in the, in the area.
So I know personally for me, my taxes are 3,000 for the month, for the year. So the 1.5%, it goes up 45 dollars. And then, yeah. And then one point, that's just me. I'm just saying it's, you know, we're saying 1.85%. But for, you know, most houses, at least in the municipality, it's less than a hundred dollars for the year. Right? I mean, it's like honestly, um, we have to do a minimum of 1.5.
And the other, the other thing that's happening right now too, is there's no education increase. So even though we're putting an increase in the, the education rates are staying the same as well. So. They're frozen for COVID too. So at least, at least it's an increase when there's not also an education increase.
Any other questions or comments? Well, we have to move forward. Otherwise we're just going to keep postponing these meetings every four days and no one can decide. So you kind of. Kind of have to. You've had the information over the weekend.
I propose we look at 1.5 scenario two.
Okay. So Gordon, Melissa, we need, we need something from you. We can, we can work on efficiencies, but that's not going to happen overnight. That's. But that, that's a process. So we, we know that. We're always looking at trying to improve that. I'm a seventh.
I, I, I thought I heard Mr. Counselor Tedesco move, um, something that needs a seconder. He moved scenario two. It would need a seconder and if no seconder, then somebody else needs to move something.
Okay. Is there a seconder for, uh, scenario number two, 1.5% increase and no change to the commercial ratio? Can't see none. So I'm going to move, uh, for option five. Is there a seconder?
I'll second it. I'll second option five.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. Seeing four hands, Counselor Park, Mayor Robinson, Counselor Tedesco, Counselor McDonald. Uh, voting in favor and one abstaining, it's council mayor. Motion is carried. Okay. Okay. Motion is carried. Sorry that we adopt option five outlined in the report and to instruct administration to make necessary changes in preparation for the final tax bill being issued. Okay. No bylaws are presented, uh, presented for tonight. Okay. Are there, uh, information items, announcements or new business issues to be brought forward? Seeing none. Okay. Next item unfinished business, the Marina op, uh, operations will be placed on the next agenda as we have suggested once monthly. There are no other matters of unfinished business scheduled for discussion. Oh, counselor or Ms. Evans?
So under new business, I just wanted to update council on the OPP detachment board issue. So Nipigan has taken the lead on presenting us an area to the province and it was due today, but we needed more time. So we have asked for a one week extension. And it was granted. So we're moving forward with that.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the closed session portion of the meeting. May have a mover and seconder to go into closed session under the authorities printed in the agenda. Counselor Tedesco, Counselor McDonald. Okay. All in favor? All hands are rising. Motion is carried. Okay. So we have a different Zoom link. Everyone go to that and we'll be back. Okay. So we have a different Zoom link. Everyone go to that and we'll be back.